I'll call the order of the work session of the Wilsonville City Council of November 17th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. I will start by asking council members for review of the agenda and items on consent. Are there any comments? Seeing none, are there any council concerns before we begin our pre-council work session?
Nope.
Seeing none. Turning now to our work session. First up is park, parks utility rate funding strategy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Chris Ammerman, Parks and Recreation Director, and I'm joined this evening by Zach Hazel with FCS Group and our Finance Director Keith Catco. Please give me a moment while I pull up the presentation to the screen. All right, so, yeah, as you mentioned, Mayor, we're going to talk tonight about potential park utility fee for our park system here in Wilsonville. I'll start, I already did introductions to the project team. Then going to talk about the background and kind of how we got to this point and then I'll turn it over, actually, before I turn it over to Zach, I'm going to turn it over to Keith. He's going to talk about the relationship between our, this potential funding mechanism that we're going to talk about and then the relationship to the general fund. Zach will also, in his analysis, talk about some comps of neighboring cities and what they're doing. And then we'll go over some potential next steps and then have some time at the end for questions and discussion. So just to kind of recap the last couple of work sessions where I've come and talked to you, Council, about our parks' growth and how that ties into maintaining our existing park maintenance level of service with upcoming expansion and how that's a current council goal. So to kind of address that and fulfill that goal, we want to be strategic in our, at all levels, our staffing, you know, the growth as it comes on and the staffing to maintain that level of service. We're also going to have, as we age as a city, we're going to have assets that are, infrastructure that's aging, and so addressing those deteriorating assets and then ultimately a funding mechanism that's sustainable that also allows us to alleviate pressure on the general fund. Speaking of the general fund, as I mentioned, Keith Catco is here and he's going to talk about kind of the relationship of this mechanism and the funding mechanism and the general fund. So take it away, Keith.
Thanks, Chris. Yep, as Chris mentioned, I'm Keith Catco, I'm the City's Finance Director, and I just have a few comments. It's kind of as part of the ongoing conversation we've been having about the general fund. It started back last year in our budget message, Brian Cosgrove's budget message in the budget book, and most recently in the September 15th council packet. In the Finance Department update, I included a walkthrough of the general fund outlook, if you had a chance to look at it, and includes specifically a detailed forecast chart showing the different revenue sources and expenditures. So for this discussion, I've just got a few high-level comments based on that, and I plan on updating that forecast chart for distribution at least again at the end of the calendar year and then again for the budget book. So just a few comments to give that context before turning it over to Zach here. The city has 24 funds, 11 of them operating, and the general fund, of course, is the operating funding source for Parks and Recreation and Parks Maintenance, as well as other core city services such as public safety, library services, facilities, administration, and a contributor to citywide planning. The fund also supports CIP projects for those functions, and that includes the HVAC repairs, replacements, facility upgrades, think of siding and roofing jobs. It pays for broadband improvements and it pays for park-specific projects such as trail stabilization, water feature upgrades, replacements, playground replacements, park lighting improvements, and ballfield safety improvements. So there's a lot going on in the general fund, is one of the most important funds of the city. The fund's fiscal year 2025 financials show a healthy position while the final figures are still under audit and we are wrapping up the year-end, which ended June 30th, 2025. They're being audited right now by an independent audit firm, but where we're at, at June 30th, is with an ending fund balance of 18.6 million, and that serves as the beginning fund balance of our current year, 2526. And so the net position, of course, is just a snapshot in time, but that's where we started off this current year, 18.6 million. So for the current fiscal year in 2526, we're expecting about 29 million in revenue coming in the fund, and the biggest share of that, roughly 13 million, comes from property taxes. On the spending side, we're projecting about 28 million in operating costs, plus another 4 million in capital project expenses funded by the general fund. And those capital projects include about 500,000 for the community center siding project, 300,000 for HVAC replacements, 400,000 for fiber connectivity, 700,000 for safety upgrades at the Memorial Park ballfields, 350 for improvements to the park water features, and about 100,000 for repairs of the forest, Forest Park and River shelters. So you can see how 4 million, we get to 4 million pretty quickly in that CIP funding of the general fund. Early estimates, so we're really early, we're just trying to close up last fiscal year, we're in our current fiscal year, but the early estimates place the fiscal year 2026, this current fiscal year, which is going to end June 30th, 2026, at about 15.6 million in the general fund. And that assumes that projects proceed as scheduled, however, typical projects, there's typical projects delay, as well as operational changes, general attrition in the cities. There's staff turnover, so there's all sorts of moving pieces that can create differences between the budgeted amounts, actual, as well as improved forecasted amounts. So those projects would get just delayed out, but they'll eventually happen, whereas some of the operational attrition savings are realized just by vacant positions and stuff that help the fund balance year over year. So the long-term outlook indicates the fund can sustain current operations for an extended future through continued, though continued CIP spending and potential service expansions such as new parklands will draw down the balance of the fund. Projections indicate an estimated 12.2 million ending fund balance by 2031. That's five years out, we kind of look five years out. That's still relatively healthy, but it's declining. The mandatory minimum fund balance is 5 million via council mandate, so that's out in five years. Of course, a lot can happen in five years, and this all includes the roughly 7 million one-time payoff of the TVWD lease proceeds that the city will be receiving in '26, '27, so that's baked into that figure. It also includes a variety of assumptions, a growing property tax base, continued development in the city, a fairly stable cost of service increase in that forecast, there's about a 3.75% year-over-year increase in cost of service, and, you know, continued level of attrition year over year, and the city floats with, it's not operating at full budget level ever. So that's kind of baked into the forecast as well, as well as continued, the need for continued CIP contribution out of the general fund for a variety of services, as Chris kind of alluded to. The city, roughly 55 years old, there's maintenance, there's routine larger projects like the siding on the community center that typically need to be done. For that city forecast, I kind of, well, I put in roughly 1.8 million year-over-year future CIP outflows as kind of a baseline of average, so that is in the forecast. So one option tonight to discuss is the park maintenance fee, which could help stabilize the fund and support the ongoing capital needs in the park system. It's not the only tool we have, but it could play a key part of the balance, of a balanced approach for the city, mixing some modest revenue growth with some careful cost management and some prioritization of services. So that's all I wanted to articulate tonight about the general fund forecast, and I'll turn it over to Zach to give, that's kind of a pretext to where we are.
Yeah, all right, thank you, Keith. Yes, once again, I'm Zach Hazel from FCS, here to talk about the park maintenance fee side of things. Just want to touch on one thing quickly, that, kind of some background here is that currently, the traditional funding source for these, for the park system, both capital and operating property taxes through the general fund, Wilsonville actually ranks in kind of the bottom third, if you look at all of the cities in Clackamas and Washington County. So that also, that helps to justify the need for a park utility fee or park maintenance fee. So this is kind of a, this is a great slide, kind of a, that we use a lot of time, we're talking about developing a new utility fee. So we have to come up with some options for funding the park system, both maintenance and capital, or operations and capital. And there's a whole kind of menu of options that you have here. Right at the top is what you currently do with the general fund, which is sufficient for both operations and capital costs, assuming that the general fund doesn't get redirected somewhere else. But you'll notice that it does suffer on a couple of other features here. General fund is not an equitable cost recovery system. It's not tied, basically, the use of the park system to the need to pay for that park system. The general fund is now, also not dedicated to parks and is not necessarily reliable for parks' operations and maintenance costs. And then you can see, there's a whole other list of options here, so I'll just run down them quickly. Special assessments, not available for operations, partially funds capital, special fees there, it does provide partial funding for operations, but none for capital. System development charges, that does provide partial funding for capital, but of course, with system development charges, you cannot use it for operations. Then you have conventional debt, special grants and loans, urban renewal, all of those provide great capital sources that you can kind of mix into the batch here, but not operations costs. The Parks and Recreation District is another great funding system. Now, there's a lot of steps to get that set up, and much simpler and more straightforward is the utility rates kind of concept here, which is the bottom row. You'll see that this one does, you know, you can fully fund your operations and capital needs. It's designed to be equitable in its cost recovery, that is, that is the law with utility fees, they have to be equitable, and so that's the kind of goal there. Of course, a parks utility or a parks maintenance fee is totally dedicated to parks, and because it's a monthly bill, that does not fluctuate, for example, water usage or anything else. It's, it's a reliable funding source as well. So the utility rate concept is ultimately very simple. It is a division problem. So the top of this division problem is the, what we call the revenue requirement. That's what we're going to collect from the park utility fee. And then the division is over the customer base that is going to be served by the parks' maintenance fee. And then, of course, you multiply it by 12 months, and that gives you the month, monthly utility rate. So we're going to break, we're going to, I'm going to show you an example of a parks utility fee calculation. It was, it's with some old data, so it's really more just a example, like a how-to of a parks maintenance fee. So there's three scenarios we're going to look at here. This is based on the fiscal year '24 budget. There's any number of scenarios we could do instead, these are just the three we picked. There's the half of total O&amp;M costs there at 776,000, there's total O&amp;M costs of 1.8 million, and then there's O&amp;M plus some amount of rate-funded capital at 2.8 million. And these are just three example scenarios. So that would be the numerator of the calculation here. The denominator of the calculation all revolves around measuring the demand generated for the parks in the city. We kind of look at this in two segments here. We have residential demand, which we, for the purposes of this demonstration, we measured using utility billing data by looking at the number of single-family dwelling units and multifamily dwelling units in the city. And, well, I'll tell you more about that in a moment, that the non-residential data, we measured using business license data to count the total number of employees in the city. Now, you'll notice that in the next table here, we have single-family, multifamily, and employee, and then we have residential equivalents per unit. That's a measure of the estimated impact on the system of these different types of development or employee in this case. So, single-family dwellings tend to be, have a higher average occupancy, in this case it was 2.71, multifamily at 1.82. And so those are occupancy figures, and they kind of give you a rough estimate of how much parks demand these different dwelling unit types are going to generate. The employee is a little bit more technical, it requires some assumptions made about how often these employees are actually going to use the park system, because obviously, if they're working in the city of Wilsonville, they're probably not going to be in their parks their whole workday. So we do make some kind of assumptions, kind of whittle down that demand, and what this means here, .05, is that one employee in the city of Wilsonville is equal to the impact of about .05 residents. Or in other words, it takes about 20 employees to equal the demand of one resident in the city of Wilsonville. So we, we have these residential equivalents per unit, and then we have the total units from either your billing data or your business license data, and we multiply those two together to get the total residential equivalents column on the right, and you can see that total is 27,503 when you add them all up. So that is the denominator of the parks maintenance fee calculation. So I'll go quickly through this slide, this is, if you've, if you heard me talk about SDCs, this is probably a pretty familiar table. The very top is about the revenue requirement, in this case, ranging from 776,000 up to 2.8 million. We then divide that by the total residential equivalents, which is the same for all three scenarios, and that gives you a monthly rate per residential equivalent there, from 2.35 up to $8.44. That is then applied to the different development types based on their expected number of REs. And you can see that for a single-family dwelling, just focusing on that, the fee would range from 637 at the lowest, up to 2287 at the highest. This next slide shows you, though, that this is, because of this, this is a very simple division problem, these three scenarios are really just points on this graph. You could theoretically pick any parks impact fee or parks maintenance fee, and it's going to fund a certain amount of revenue that you could use for operations and/or capital, which is on the left-hand side. And you can see scenarios one, two, and three are plotted on this graph. Lastly, what are some comparable jurisdictions doing? So this, this graphic is a little outdated, they might have gone up a little bit since this was put together, but you can see that in Wilsonville scenario one, 637, that would put you pretty much right in the middle of the pack here. 1466 would put you at the top of your comparable jurisdictions for a parks maintenance fee, but still below West Lynn. And then the last scenario, scenario three, would put you above West Lynn. And then also on the right-hand side, you can see that pretty much every comparable jurisdiction also charges a parks maintenance fee to those non-residential uses, except for West Lynn. So, next steps from my perspective on this next slide here. Yeah, next steps from my perspective, if this is something the council is interested in, is that we would need to make sure and go back and refine our customer data. That might have some adjustments up or down in the total denominator of the calculation. We could also better clarify the final scenarios we want to look at, clarify any sources of non-rate revenues that we want to exclude from the fee recovery, and then we could come back for a consideration and adoption of the park utility fee.
Thank you, Zach and Keith, and yeah, now return over to council for any questions and discussion on this topic.
Counselors? City Council, President Barry.
Maybe you mentioned, maybe you mentioned this during your report, thank you for the report. So, this, this is to keep, overall, the concept is that we need more money to keep the existing parks. This doesn't have anything to do with the new parks that will be taken on board, or are we seeing this information because we're anticipating new parks and additional costs associated with maintaining those parks?
All of the above, yeah, it would help with the existing system expansion and, and everything else, and not just capital, but operations as well.
Okay, so, basically what you're saying is we don't have enough money to operate the parks right now if we were to continue on the trajectory that we're on right now, that we need additional money?
Well, we can continue to operate, it's just if we want to fulfill the council goal of maintaining existing levels of maintenance through our expansion. We've already established with the staffing assessment that we're currently staffed under the industry standard as far as what a comparable park system would have based on our acreage and FTEs, et cetera. So, to, and then as we add to the system, yes, we would just fall behind as far as our, our operations, and that's not including new projects and it's not including replacement of aging infrastructure.
I would look at it as we're okay for now, at the level of service we're at right now, but with the addition of the 2026 extra, we'll be able to maintain that at the same level we are right now. And then our ability to fund capital projects for parks is going to be pretty much gone in probably two or three years. We've already cut way back in terms of what we provide for, for parks in terms of CIP, or at least we did in the last budget segment, when there was a lot of wants and asks that we couldn't fulfill. So I, I think it's more of a three to four-year problem.
Thank you, that helped, that clarified it. That's what I thought we were talking about, I just wanted to...
Counselor Shavon.
Thank you, and thank you also for the presentation. So I did have a question about FTEs, because we saw from the previous report and in the packet that we're below the industry standard by approximately two FTEs, that includes the growth that we anticipate. Is that correct?
No, that is prior to the growth. That's right now. If we add, and as we add, the recommendation is to add one FTE per 16 acres, so an additional 26 would be close to two, you know, two more positions.
And that was part of my question is, was if we, well, let me back up. So the funding options that were presented, one, two, and three, would include the salaries, could include the salaries then for the FTEs, correct?
Yeah, you're free to, free to use it for operations and maintenance, so...
And is that something that you might propose that we could phase in over a period of time, or that you would need the two FTEs relatively soon?
No, exactly, phasing, phasing those in is, was, is the plan, or would, would be the plan, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Skoll.
Can we back up to the, to the sheet where you started with the numbers? Just a couple of questions there that I may not have caught on to, but I'd like to go through it. Keep going.
Okay.
I forget, I didn't get the slide number.
This one?
Next one, okay, right there. The multifamily, it has a factor there, like, single-family's 2.71, multifamily is 1.82, is that a multiplier?
Yeah, so, basically, yeah, I'm sorry, I did kind of go quickly through this. So the basic concept here is that we're calculating a park utility fee per what's called a residential equivalent. And now for residential uses, that just means a resident of the city. Now for single-family and multifamily, we use the average occupancy of those dwelling unit types from census data to get the number of REs in those dwelling units. And so multifamily has 1.82, single-family has 2.71.
Thank you. And then a general question about concerning park space or the parks that we have versus where we want to go, are we on par with other surrounding cities, or are we ahead of the game there, behind the game? Where are we on averages compared to other, other cities in the area?
That'd be hard, that'd be hard to...
As far as like parks, park acreage per, per resident? I mean, I, I think we're, we're right in the ballpark without, you know, looking up a study. I think we're, we're near the median.
It would be, I mean, you have to do apples to apples, because some cities have aquatic and rec centers, we don't.
True.
Some, some cities have 50, like Metford has a 50-acre sports complex, we don't have that. We do have 10 acres that's next to the middle school that's designed to be a sport field complex, but we don't have the, the revenue to, to make those improvements right now. And I'm not suggesting the utility fee is going to, I mean, you could partially fund that, but that's, that would be more of a geo-bond, general fund bond to develop something like that.
And the last question, you talked about non-residential fees, how would they be applied?
So that would require, so one of the next steps is clarifying the customer data a little bit. We do have business license data that gives you the number of employees per business license, and you could implement the utility fee that way, but you need to find some way to integrate it with the customer, or the utility billing system. So there might be a little bit more work there to translate the theoretical to the practical.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Shavon.
It's an observation for our council and for those here and listening that we do know that how important our parks are to our citizens. I believe we've all received the feedback now just from the recent town center focus groups, and there was a thread throughout the feedback in all of the focus groups about how much people appreciated our parks and our green spaces in Wilsonville, which is why I'm sure as a council goal, and we chose to, you know, certainly maintain the level of service for our parks. So they are very, very important to our residents, and even just a small snapshot in those focus groups, it was consistently mentioned as one of the top reasons people really like living in Wilsonville. Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham.
Yeah, so, I think that the timing on this is a little tough, coming off of our conversations two weeks ago regarding the increase to utility fees for sewer and stormwater. Those are incredibly drastic increases, and I think the timing of this is, is not great. You know, we're talking about bringing on these other parks in the next couple of years, and I think that it begs the question of, you know, some decisions that, that may have been made by some past councils to agree to take on those responsibilities from neighborhood parks, namely the Parks in Villebois. The expansion of these parks is now, you know, seems to be necessitating or bringing this ask to council to then have a mandatory fee on every citizen in the city just for living here in Wilsonville and having access to those parks. To me, it's, it's a, this, this brings up, you know, the concern that, that we should all have of where we go policy-wise in the future of, of taking on those extra responsibilities, taking on back in the early 90s, the Charbonneau walking path, which we're also now going to be looking at in the coming months of how we deal with the maintenance on that property that the city didn't necessarily, as far as I understand, have to take that on back, I think it was 1994. And all these things are coming back around, and now, now we're being asked to tax our citizens on the heels of the, the largest utility rate increase the city has ever seen. To me, this is a hard sell right now. I guess it's not really a question, but some, some considerations about how we move forward and how we look at taking on those further responsibilities, especially when they're coming out of, of neighborhood parks, so...
Just to clarify, the Villebois parks are regional parks, not neighborhood parks. That means they're accessed by everybody in the community that wants to use them. So you're talking about regional parks one through eight in Villebois?
Right.
The neighborhood parks are, are maintained by the HOAs, not the city. But the regional parks are maintained by the city.
So who was doing the maintenance three years ago on these parks?
Well, every park that was built, the five, there was a five-year maintenance period that was done by the HOA and the developers. After five years, the city took on the maintenance responsibilities.
What I'm saying is that seems like a bad deal for the rest of the citizens of Wilsonville.
Not, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying that there are neighborhood parks in Villebois
Sure.
that are not maintained by the city, they're maintained by the HOA. The regional parks are maintained by the city.
Right. Now, now they are. Now we are taking...
Five of the eight are, three, three of the additional, which is part of the 26 acres in the next three years will be, so that's...
So once they reach their maturity date of five years being maintained by the HOA, the regional parks are then brought onto the city's maintenance umbrella.
Sure. And, and I, and I had an understanding of that, that the issue to me is going forward when we're looking at policy, when we're looking at taking urban renewal dollars and building something, because urban renewal built those parks. And urban renewal is slated, is advertised as no new taxes. And urban renewal is, is slated, is advertised as no new taxes. Here's your new tax. Because we're taking on these parks that were built with urban renewal. That could have been, in that deal, could have been built by the developers and, and maintained by the HOAs for their lifetime if the deal was made at the time that that would have been the case. But the policies made at the time made it so that now we are taking these parks on.
Thank you, Counselor Cunningham. I have a question. I'm, maybe I'm looking at it wrong. Eighty-two percent of our citizens during the week go, go work and leave elsewhere. You know, there, some of them may have children that utilize the parks during the week, others may not. We have over ninety-one percent of our workforce from outside the city coming in. I anticipate during the lunch hour and stuff that they're taking advantage of those parks, maybe not all of them. And then we have those folks that come in to Wilsonville to enjoy our parks, if it be to watch their kids, you know, participate in sports with our local teams. That non-residential piece, I wish there was a way to capture more money from the non-residential folks. So I agree with Counselor Cunningham, there is a burden. I think, I, I'm kind of a, look at things from the dry lawyer that I am, that I think it's too late to go back and unchange things that were done a long time ago, were kind of locked in. I understand Counselor Cunningham's position that we should think about future policy, but right now, the goal for the, for the council that we agree to do is explore a fee, but I think it would be helpful if we can find a formula that captures more of the non-residential. Maybe in your expert opinions, it does. I just think that's a better sell for me that we're making sure that they're paying their contribution. So, my thoughts.
Isn't that formula could be tweaked?
Yeah, so the key with the utility fee concept is that you need to be charging for the actual availability of the park system to these different categories. So that said, when we, when you, when you see such a low residential equivalency factor there, that's because the assumptions that we made basically produced a very low availability of the park system to non-residential employees. And we did that based on commuting patterns of employees who work in Wilsonville, when are they actually here? When do they, when do they leave? However, there are assumptions that went into that that could be, could be looked at and we could perhaps write a range of, of possibilities for that non-residential component rather than just giving you the one option that we developed here.
Okay. I tend to rely, excuse me, I tend to rely on experts, so you're the expert. But here's a thought that I'm thinking that may or may not fly. You know, we have a fee that we're thinking of putting it on the utility bill, I'm assuming to capture that. We're trying to address the workers that are here through capturing how many workers are working with the employers. Why can't we, as a consequence, give some sort of permit, if you will, or sticker that goes in our utility bill, say, well, you're paying this, so here's your sticker resident to put on your car, and you can go to, if you're using your car or whatever, you have access. Oh, here we go. Yeah, I knew the lawyer was going to kick in. But what I'm saying is, in the options of those that are coming out, that they have to buy some sort of, you know, fee. But I guess my very knowledgeable city attorney is going to tell me, gee, nice plan, but can't do.
The only thing that we would need to investigate is how that affects our recreational immunity. Once you charge fees to recreate, it affects your recreational immunity protections.
Yeah, but.
So if you have to have a sticker to park in a city parking, in a city park, parking lot.
As a city manager, I'm just thinking of how you would administer and.
Yeah, well, there's always that, but the, the, I'm not worried about that. You'll solve that problem.
No.
Or your, or that's your job, not mine. But anyway, but if the state of Oregon charges a parking fee for me to use shampooy, and I thought that there are some local municipalities that charge a fee, I guess I would ask us to explore what are they doing that we may be able to replicate, or maybe there are problems. But I, I just want to capture more of a expense and distribute it not to our citizens in our community, but the non-residential folks that come in. So I really, to me, there could be more there. So that's my.
I, I understand your thinking. In the, in the example of state, state parks, they're more of destination parks, so people are going to travel ways and, and to get to them. So, and then there are counties that rely on parking fees or other, you know, user fees. I'm not aware of any municipal situations where that's the case, but we can certainly look into that.
Well, if there's any other creative idea to capture more non-residential, I'd like to see more money there.
I think a, a way, and it was on that chart, is special districts, but I just don't think we're in that. Because with a special district, like Zach mentioned, there's a lot of steps to forming a special district, and then you also, you basically forfeit your control of, of the park system because you're, what you're doing is broadening your tax base and, and maybe mirroring the school district tax base, which again, wouldn't work here because we're Westland, Wilsonville School District. So there's some issues with that as well, but that, that is a way that people go outside of their, their city boundary to, to create more funding for their park system.
Okay. Thank you. And, oh, excuse me, Counselor Shev, uh, excuse me, Counselor Cunningham.
The other thing I was going to mention on this is, given, given those utility rate increases that we talked about two weeks ago, given the recent pass, you know, re-upping of the school bond, given, you know, the gas tax and all these different things that are going on that people are really starting to feel nickel-dimed by, I think that it'd be prudent for this council if we consider doing this, that we refer this to the ballot and let the citizens decide if they're willing to stomach another fee.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. You have, do you have what we need?
Well.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think we explore some of the options that were mentioned and come back, I guess, with.
No, I, I think we probably need to give some direction if there's any of those scenarios that you'd like to look at. We got some direction on trying to capture some, some fees by out-of-towners, but other than that, I didn't see any preference for options one, two, or three.
And like Zach mentioned, these are just points on a line. You could pick any, any point on there.
You, you have flexibility here to, to do something less. You could do a phase in, you could table it. I mean, you have, you have options as a council. I mean, at some point, you know, we're going to have to, there's going to have to be a discussion about if you want to maintain the level of service on parks, which happens to be that one of the top three things that people move to this community for and rave about in all of our community surveys. You're going to have to make some decisions on investments in maintenance and maintenance workers.
Well, from my perspective, unless you're going to tell me otherwise, is a decision now without, I'd like to see more information on how to capture that non-residential thing. I really would. I'm sorry to cause more work before I can decide on the scenarios.
Well, some direction could be that we could look at the underlying assumptions in that point oh-five and give you some options there. I think that would be the cleanest and easiest way to do it because administering, I'm just thinking of the park rangers you would have to hire to administer the fees and the fee collection, and would it be cash? Would it be like some kind of debit card? Just as a city manager, I'm thinking of how you would enforce that. So I think the best way to do that would be to look at that point zero-five and see if there's a way to ratchet that up. And then you could reduce somewhat on the residential and multifamily.
And I just put up the parking fee as an option, but I just want to capture more of an expense on the non-resident coming in. So, and your suggestion is fine with me, but from my perspective, but others may disagree. Counselor Shavon?
Thank you. I, I do agree we need to look at all the different options.
I agree, we need to look at all the different options that might be available to really dig down deep, but as a council, not but, but additionally, as a council, I, I guess I have to ask, I don't know what, I knew what we were thinking when we chose this as a goal back in February, March, when we had our retreat. I, I knew that it would mean that, well, there's always dollar signs that come with maintaining a level of service for our parks, a level of maintenance, and then knowing that we are not at the industry standard, then I, I don't, I don't move quickly to just adding FTEs or adding a fee to, you know, to our utility bills, any of those things. But that was a goal that we decided upon, and we can't be naive to know that, to think that that doesn't come with some, some fees that have to be, help us meet that goal. Thank you.
And to Counselor Shavon's point, at least from my opinion, I'm not suggesting we prolong this forever. I just, there's nothing that says we could come back again, in my view, unless you think there's some deadline we're running into.
There's no deadline.
Yeah.
Other than every, every budget cycle, there's going to be a gap.
Understood. And, and I see this as, if necessary, we call a special meeting. We're doing a lot of those lately.
Well, I don't think you need to do a special meeting. I think you just need to give the direction to staff in terms of what you would like us to bring back and when. That's, I think, what we need.
City Council President, oh, wait a minute, Counselor Cunningham, excuse me. No? The numbers are changing. It's like, it's like bingo here on practice. Counselor Skoll.
So this is a tough one, and I agree totally with Counselor Cunningham. You know, we, we went through this sewer project, it's going to be a pretty big push to get that through, and this, as an adder to it, I do struggle with it. I would like to see how we can get more focused on the non-residential side and how that would work. I know there's some operational issues there and administrative issues there. And then also, if I hear you correctly in that part of the discussion, if we weren't to add the additional acreage and, and leave the parks as is, you know, from a service level, we would be okay for a couple of years. And, and so I'd like to clarify that.
Yeah, I, I would defer to, to Chris on that one.
Well, to clarify though, adding that acreage is not an option. It's, it's already been decided through development agreements and community planning processes before, you know, today.
So they're on the hook.
We're, yeah, as, as Adam alluded to earlier, that, those were policy decisions and decisions that were made previous to now. It's just now that those are coming online, we will need to add staff to, to maintain our current level of service with the additional acreage.
Okay. So again, I would fall back to looking at the non-residential and seeing how this softens up, if anything, and then we're going to have to wrestle over some more to figure out what's the right thing to do.
Another option is like if you're, if you're looking at the cost side, you know, you could also reduce your levels of service. You know, this, it's not just a, an additive, it can also be subtractive. That's an option that you have as a council. You can reduce levels of service. You could do that for police, you could do that for parks, you could do that for any, any general fund activity.
Council President Barry.
Thank you. So I agree that parks are an amenity that our citizens really, really care about, and that's reflected in the city council's goals. And I also agree with Counselor Cunningham, you know, nobody wants to see increased costs to their personal household bills. So I would like to support also looking at the non-residential, if we can have a little bit more cost placed on those, and maybe not scenario number three where it's the twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, but looking at the lower cost scenarios of number one and two, and see what we can come up with.
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham.
So thinking about the non-residential approach, I, I definitely understand what the city manager's saying about how we go about enforcing it. There's a lot of layers to implementing that, getting a payment system, having enforcement in place. All those things come with money attached to them as well, so I, I can see how that might end up being a difficult solution. I think it's, I suppose it's worth looking at and seeing if it's a, something that anyone else has done successfully and something maybe we might be able to model. What I was, you know, what I was thinking about, I, I know that one of our council goals was to maintain service levels for our parks. Our parks, like we've all talked about, like we all understand, are one of the features of Wilsonville that really make people proud to be residents here and happy to be here. At the same time, that was our council goal. It was the five of us, or five, five folks in, in a room that, that made that goal. A goal and, and when it comes down to the brass tacks of, of how much it's going to cost each of our citizens, each of our households in our, in our city, might be two different things. That's why I suggest that we, if we're going to look at this, we were, we look at something between scenario one and scenario two. Probably would require figuring out what would be palatable to our community, and then we let our community vote on it and decide if they would like to pony up the money for it, and if they would like to engage in this, and if not, then we need to figure out, maybe then we do need to reduce services. The council goal was just a council goal. It wasn't necessarily a community goal. And I would like to see our citizens be able to weigh in on this as a new, novel, and unique utility fee. It's not something that is required, that, that, that we're making sure that, you know, sewage isn't flowing out of their, back out of their toilets like we have to do with sewer and stormwater. This is a little bit different. And to me, it feels, as much as it is an important thing for our community, it's also not a mandatory thing for our community, like sewer and the other things are to keep the lights on and keep the water flowing. So that would be my suggestion. I think it would make a lot of people happy.
Thank you, Counselor Cunningham. I, you know, if we had to choose a scenario, it would be between one and two, I guess, this evening, believe it or not. I still would like to, from my perspective, focus on capturing that from non-resident, taking into account the cost of trying to capture that, but I, I just, we have a lot of people that live outside the city of Wilsonville city limits that aren't going to be paying into this, and that's, that's a problem for me. So, but anyway. Anything further from folks?
No, I think, I think we have what we need. We'll explore those, you know, out-of-area or non-residential options. We'll get hard at the point oh-five FTE, and then we'll drill down on scenarios between one and two in, in that range, and then, then also, I think what I'm hearing from Counselor Cunningham is doing some sort of community outreach as far as what that would look like, and when it comes to voting, it's beyond, that's.
I, I think he, he's recommending to his peers that they put it out to a vote.
Okay.
That's nothing we would be involved in.
Okay.
Other than drafting that ballot title.
Okay. Yeah, I think we have what we need. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next up is SMART Annual Riders Survey Results.
Allow me to lighten the mood a bit, I hope. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. I'm Dwight Burchier. I am the Transit Director for the City of Wilsonville, and my primary reason for standing here tonight is to make an introduction of our new Transit Operations Manager. here tonight is to make an introduction of our new Transit Operations Manager sitting here, Diana Kotler, is a transportation veteran out of Southern California. She joined us in September, and she's hit the ground running. You know, when you search for someone and you, you always talk about someone that can hit the ground running, well, she defines that. She is a, I would call her a policy expert, and she has come in and started looking at some of the things that we do and how we do them. And so I'm excited to present her to you this evening, and I would be remiss if I didn't kind of add a little bit of context. And a special thank you to both Andrea Villagrana and to Gina Troha. This was a very, very difficult recruitment for me. It took the better part of a year. And I had, I'm not ashamed to say that I, I, I got discouraged, thinking that maybe that right person wasn't out there. And in talking to both Andrea and Gina, especially Gina got me to look at, she said, "What are you looking for?" I said, "I'm looking for the right person." And she said, "What does that mean?" And so she had me go through an exercise where I kind of listed those qualities out. What are the must-haves and what are the like-to-haves? And we were able to go through that process. And in the end, I was able to look at it differently. And the result of that, and patience, it wasn't my patience, it was the patience of Andrea and Gina, that led to something that was very serendipitous. I mean, the position could have been filled, but it wasn't, and because I was told not to settle. And so we had an opening, and then we had someone that was looking to relocate to Wilsonville. And so she is a resident of Wilsonville, and incredible find for us, and we were fortunate to have her. And so I don't want to steal their thunder, but you have one of the best transit agencies in the country, right here in Wilsonville, certainly the best in this state. I will put SMART up against any other agency in this state, but one of the best in the country, and it's because of folks like this. You're looking at the future of, of SMART, and I'm just as excited as I can be. So I will turn it over to the two of them. I will be all the way in the back of the room there, just smiling the whole time. So enjoy. Thank you.
On behalf of the city council, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for relocating here, and look forward to hearing good thanks.
Thank you. It's my privilege to be here in this chair and work for you.
Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to present the findings from our most recent onboard survey. Each year we do, we survey riders onboard our fixed route, and we alternate between satisfaction and demographics. This year was satisfaction. So we usually conduct these surveys in September, and our goal is to survey each trip of service. So we survey typically Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then a Saturday. And we offer our surveys in English and Spanish, both hard copy and also online. And we also are able to use a staffing agency, Summit, who is local, to help us with the onboard survey. So this year, we got 201 surveys, both electronic and hard copy, completed. And so a little bit about our surveyors, they, we had three this year that actually participated in last year's survey, and we have a surveyor that is a regular paratransit user of our system. So we look at different areas of service and ask our riders, what do you think, with five being very satisfied and one being not satisfied at all? And we ask the same questions each satisfaction survey, just to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. And so we took all of those areas of service, like operator conduct, accuracy of information, and averaged it, and it came out 4.6 out of five, which our previous survey, which was not last year, but the year before, for satisfaction, it was a 4.5. So we're still doing very well, high satisfaction from our riders. And if you look at the screen, system safety scored very high, and reliability, also operator conduct. And operator conduct would be like friendliness, knowledge of the system, and so on. And so I'll go on to the next. Let's see. And we also asked our riders, would you recommend this to your friends and family? And 99%, actually, it was a little bit more than 99% said they would, which was fabulous. And then looking at some other areas of service, we scored very har- high, excuse me, in vehicle, how clean our vehicles are inside, and also how clean our bus stops are. So it's very gratifying to see that folks score so high in these different areas. So our key takeaways for this is that our riders continue to give us high marks. Overwhelmingly, our drivers continue to get high, high marks for their knowledge and their friendliness. And also, other areas that we scored high in is, like I said, safety onboard, insides of our bus being clean, and then our bus stops being clean. And so at that, I'll leave it open for any questions.
Counsel President Barry?
Thank you for your report. It's just really, really nice to see the survey that is presented every year, whether it's, you know, on the service or, or whatever the topic is, that we're getting really high remarks. And I think that you can see that by, when you're driving past the buses, you can see that they're clean, you can see that the bus stops look really tidy and clean. And I've, I've had the privilege of doing the dial-a-ride for the last couple of weeks to get to doctor's appointments, and if I were to be taking the survey, I would also be giving you really high remarks. The drivers were very friendly and very knowledgeable, and it was a great service. So thank you.
Counselor Shavon?
Thank you, and I'll echo the mayor's sentiments. Welcome, Ms. Kotler. It's nice to have you onboard. Just a congratulations to you for continuing as a whole team, for your service in regards to our SMART system. Takes a lot of work to be able to have results like this and to maintain them. So I just want to congratulate you and Mr. Burchier on the, the good work, and we continue to, to appreciate all the good work that SMART offers, and we look forward to hearing more from Ms. Kotler.
Thank you.
Counselor Skoll?
Just a quick, thank you for your presentation and welcome. Also, we met the other day, and I appreciate you coming to help us out with our transit system. The, one quick question regarding system reliability, is that related to schedule or is that basically equipment performance?
No, that has to do with, actually, that does have to do with on-time performance.
Okay.
And, and how reliable is, you know, if the bus, if the schedule says the bus will be there at 10:00 a.m., is the bus there at 10:00 a.m.?
Mm-hmm. And the clarity of information, is that involve interpretation of the maps and the, and the routes and information such as that?
That's part of it, and also how we communicate overall to our passengers and the public. So how easy is it to understand, like you were saying, the maps and the schedules? And if the schedule says such and such, are we actually meeting that timetable? So are we doing what we're supposed to be doing?
Good, good. Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham?
Obviously, some very good marks, so congratulations on those. The, on the, I was looking through the raw data on question two, it, it kind of shows the responses by route, and, you know, I think it was five, six, seven, and blah blah shuttle were, they were all under 5%. Is that kind of reflective of the ridership on those, or is that...
Yes.
Okay, so was, was it pretty close to the ridership that we got responses?
It is, and those are routes that are a challenge, because typically, folks are riding frequently through the day. And so when presented a survey later in the day, like, oh, no thanks, we've already taken it.
Gotcha.
So, and also, it, the, there are times during the day that those routes tend to have lower ridership, and so it's, it's hard to capture without, you know, repeating, you know, folks and, and their, and their opinions.
Gotcha, that makes sense. And then the only other thing I was going to mention, I, I mean, knowing Mr. Burchier's, you know, strive for excellence all the time, and obviously, if, if he hired you, you must share that quality. You know, I mean, a 4.4, I'm, I'm sure you got some plans to get some of those, those things up about clarity of information and stuff like that. I bet next year, we see 4, 6-plus on those.
Absolutely. That's our goal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think you guys do an excellent job, and welcome aboard. I just think you're a stellar service. You are the envy of our other jurisdictions. It's enjoyment to attend all the different, you know, Washington County and Clifftown County mayors' meetings, to hear about SMART, how they kind of wish they could duplicate. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to, we're adjourning the work session. At 6:03, the city council will meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute Section 192, 660, subsection 2, paragraph E, real property transactions, and paragraph A, legal counsel slash litigation and consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of the city with regard to current litigation, litigation likely to be filed. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers. We'll be adjourned for five minutes, reconvening at 6:10 again. Chambers will be adjourned for five minutes, reconvening at 6:10 again.
Council for November 17, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Chevlin.
Here.
Counselor President Berry.
Here.
Counselor Cunningham.
Here.
Counselor Scholl.
Here.
Mayor O’Neil.
Here. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor President Berry can have a motion to approve the following order of agenda.
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to approve the following order of agenda has been made and seconded. All of, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. Good evening, everyone. Since this is our last council meeting before Thanksgiving, I want to speak briefly, not about policy, but about people and what this season really asks of us as a community. Over the past few months, I’ve heard the same thing from friends, neighbors, and folks across Wilsonville. These are tough economic times. Prices are high, budgets are tight, and for many families, the reduction in federal food assistance has created real strain. This isn’t abstract. You can feel it in conversations at the grocery stores, in our schools, in our own neighborhoods. That’s why this year, in the spirit of, the spirit of Thanksgiving feels especially important. As we sit down to our own meals, I’m asking all of us to keep in mind the seniors living on fixed incomes, families with young children, especially in the marginalized communities, people experiencing houselessness, and those across the city are working hard but still struggling to make ends meet, including those who are unemployed trying to find work. One of the things I love about Wilsonville is that when someone’s hurting, we show up. And there are concrete ways to do that right now. Wilsonville Community Sharing continues to be one of our most important partners. You can donate or volunteer. Just visit wilsonvillecommunitiesharing.org for details. We also have the heart of the city. If you’re able, consider contributing a new unwrapped toy for a child or a holiday stocking for a local senior. Items can be dropped off at the Wilsonville Community Center through December 8th. Toys go directly to local families through the Wilsonville Family Empowerment Center, and stockings are delivered to homebound seniors through Clackamas County Compassion and Action. And of course, many of our local nonprofits, faith communities, and businesses are hosting their own food drives and toy drives this season. At the end of the day, this is how Wilsonville rolls, stepping up for one another, especially when times are hard. Thank you for being a community that cares and for helping ensure that everyone in Wilsonville can feel a sense of belonging and support this holiday season. With that, I’ll discuss some things that I covered this, this part of, early part of November. On Wednesday, November 5th, counselors Cunningham, Chevlin, and I attended the Clackamas County State of the County. The Board of Commissioners shared updates on the county’s priorities, including transportation, childcare, and addiction recovery efforts. I’m proud to say that Wilsonville got more shout-outs than any other city. That’s a reflection of our leadership, both at the, the city administration and as, and our council, and reinforcing that even if we are physically on the edge of the metro region, Wilsonville issues are regional issues. On Thursday, November 6th, I attended the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee C4 with Counselor Chevlin. That was held in Canby. The C4 meeting was a different format than usual. We heard from City of Canby staff about their housing, transit, and economic development work. While Canby is different from Wilsonville, in many respects, we share similarities, and it was a va, it was valuable to hear how they’re approaches, how they’re approaching those issues. Also, their interaction with their transit and Smart Transit was also refreshing to hear them kind of speak positively to each other. Last Tuesday, November 11th, was Veterans Day, which is a time to reflect and honor those who have served our country originally called Armistice Day, to commemorate the signing of the Treaty of Versailles, ending the world, ending the First World War I. It was expanded after World War II to honor all veterans. I was honored to speak at a Veterans Day ceremony at the Korean War Memorial in Town Center Park. That included a memorial wreath presentation, and I appreciate Counselor Chevlin helping me with that. Special thanks to David Penaflore, President of the Oregon Trail Chapter of the Korean War Veterans Association, and the entire Korean War Veterans Association for their partnership to put on this event. On a related note, Mr. Penaflore will soon be relocating to Arizona to be closer to his grandchildren. I want to recognize and extend a heartfelt thank you on behalf of our community to him for his leadership with the Korean War Veterans Association Oregon Trail Chapter and the Korean War Memorial Foundation of Oregon. Additionally, he was instrumental in the completion of the Interpretive Center, in crafting Veterans Day and Memorial Day events at Town Center, and in representing the best in civic mindedness. I ask on behalf of the City of Wilsonville that we give him a hearty round of applause to send him off to Arizona to be with his grandchildren. Upcoming events, I know the Wilsonville Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee is developing the 2026 Pride Pin and partnering with Lux Sukur to, I hope I’m pronouncing that, Suk, Sukray. I always call it Lux. I can never get that second word, but it’s still a very wonderful place, to raise funds. On November 19, 10% of all sales at Lux Sukray will go forward, go toward the City of Wilsonville’s 2026 Pride Pin. So stop by for your favorite coffee or treat. Thank you to Lux for their generosity and partnership. November 20th is Transgender Day of Remembrance, a day to memorialize those whose lives were lost because of transphobia. The day was founded to draw attention to the continued violence directed towards trans, transgendered people, even as late as this past month. On November 22nd is the City in partnership with Republic Services is hosting the Annual Leaf Drop Off Day. It’ll happen between 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM that Saturday at the City Hall parking lot. A collection, leaf collection improves roadway safety, prevents flooding, and improves aquatic habitat. Wilsonville residents are invited to drop off leaves from the yard. Leaves only, no other yard debris, please. City Public Works staff will be on hand to assist residents. For more details about that day, including the best way to bring to your leaves, you just go to wilsonvilleoregon.gov/calendar and click on Leaf Drop Day Event on November 22nd. In lieu of a fee, the City encourages participants to bring a cash or check donation for Wilsonville Community Sharing. Great opportunity to provide last-minute support for those in need before Thanksgiving. Through November 24th, the City is inviting residents and other community stakeholders to share their feedback regarding the Wilsonville Town Center Plan and the funding mechanism that would support implementation of that plan over the next several decades. This is part of City Council’s broader effort to hear from the community on the future of Town Center, and one way for you to share your thoughts and ideas. To participate, visit Let’s Talk Wilsonville or the City’s homepage, wilsonvilleoregon.gov, and provide feedback by Monday, November 24th. I want to note some holiday closures for city offices, including the library, community center, and Smart Transit. Those days are Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th, in observance of Thanksgiving. Smart service will resume on Saturday. Smart Service will resume on Saturday, November 29th. I'm pleased to once again recognize the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday in Wilsonville. This annual celebration is part of a nationwide campaign encouraging residents to shop local on November 29th, and to show support for the independently owned businesses that give our community its character. Small Business Saturday sits between the major shopping holidays of Black Friday and Cyber Monday, but its purpose is different, reminding us that every dollar spent in a Wilsonville shop, restaurant, or service business stays closer to home. These are the businesses that create local jobs, sponsor youth sports and community events, encourage their employees and customers to participate in food and toy drives, and help make Wilsonville a vibrant and welcoming place. I encourage everyone to visit and support our local businesses, not just on Small Business Saturday, but throughout the holiday season and all year long. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, December 1st, starting at 7:30 PM. Turning to communications. Tonight, we will hear an update from Wilsonville Friends of the Library, joined by Library Director Shasta Sasser about the Book Bike Project, which is funded through a community enhancement grant from Metro.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Shasta Sasser, Library Director, and I'm here with the President of the Wilsonville Friends of the Library, Alan Steiger. And we're going to be talking about the completion of our Book Bike Project, which was in partnership with the Wilsonville Friends of the Library and the Metro Enhancement, Community Enhancement Grant. So the project objective for this was to really have a vehicle for outreach. We're not a wide enough spread community to need maybe a bookmobile, but a book bike in our city that's very bikeable is a great tool to get more library services out into the community. So it was a good fit for our needs.
So in conjunction with the library, the Friends of the Library applied for a Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Grant and pledged matching funds for the project. We'll get into the details a little later.
So for the, thank you, from the project timeline, this had a few little hurdles along the way. We had to switch book bike vendors about halfway through, but we were able to go out to Garden Home Community Library. They used a Portland vendor and check out their bike. And so we switched vendors and got a great bike as a result.
We certainly appreciate the help of the City Attorney in this as well. It took all of us.
And the book bike was delivered on June 13th.
So the budget for the book bike was $12,001.90. You could see the actuals came in, about $600 less than that. Grant request was for $6,250, which we received. Those of you that are quick with math may say that the Friends didn't match totally your grant. There was one little item that didn't get included in the grant request. Where's the book bike gonna sleep? After discussion, the Friends have agreed to fund $3,000 for a book shed so the bike can sleep well at night.
It's been getting good sleep in the library, but we'll be happy to have the shed. And the cost of the project included a laptop and a hotspot so we could check out books from the book bike, safety gear, and some fun accessories, because it's a fun bike, like a megaphone and a Bluetooth speaker and a light. So as I said, we went with a local Portland vendor after running into some problems, and they were fantastic. The bike has seven gears and eAssist. The eAssist really comes in handy coming from Memorial Park to the library. And it has, the book bike, if you haven't noticed, is over here to our left. It has a nice table for the laptop, brochure holders, a chalkboard. It's pretty nice setup to display books. And as I said, we can check out books from the book bike, but the Friends and the foundation have both supported us in buying books to give away as well. So that's been popular for kids to come pick out a book to take home.
A number of the Friends Board offered to volunteer to drive the bike. Shasta said we all had to be trained for it.
It is a little tricky to ride. It's not like a normal bike. And when it's loaded with books, it's a fun challenge. And then the vinyl wrap was designed by staff, and it mirrors, if you've been into the library recently, a lot of our new signage. So as Alan said, we did have to go through a safety course. We had seven staff trained to properly ride it, fix a tire, all that kind of stuff. We were kind of wrapping up the season of it as the weather gets a little more difficult and the days are a little shorter, but we'll have a new calendar of scheduled events for spring. And then we've had a lot of pop-up appearances this summer and fall across the community. The book bike was at the party in the park. We've taken it to Autumn Park Apartments, Harvest Fest, Emergency Preparedness Fair, Daycares, Farmer's Market, and then sometimes we just take it across to Marazzi Park. So it's made a lot of appearances in a short amount of time. And again, we just want to say huge, huge thank you to the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Grant Program for making this possible and the Wilsonville Friends.
Thank you.
Any questions about the book bike?
Counselor Cunningham.
Well, I was gonna ask if I could ride it, but apparently there's entry fee on that one, so.
Come by anytime, and we'll get you trained up.
There you go. I don't know what time of year the schools do their bike fairs or rodeos or whatever the heck they're called these days.
We were at the most recent bike fair, or bike rodeo, yes.
Were you successful in navigating the course?
I believe she was. It doesn't turn very, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be the tough part, but it'd be fun to have the kids watch and laugh as all the cones get knocked out. Awesome, thank you.
Counselor Scott.
No questions. I just think this is an excellent idea, and I want to thank you for doing this. This looks great. Is there a route that you're following, or is it kind of an ad-lib thing in different neighborhoods?
We have different routes depending on where we're going. We actually had a former employee who's a big bike enthusiast, and so she was able to tell us some of the routes that she uses, like underneath the overpass. There's a couple of different routes that are a little safer that she recommended, and we've utilized those, but it really depends on where we're going.
Very nice, thank you.
City Council President Berry.
Thank you, thank you so much for the presentation and that you brought it in to show off to everybody. So the funding came from the Metro Grant and then from the Friends of the Library. Can you tell us a little bit about Friends of the Library? Like, how can we help support that?
Well, the Friends of the Library are the folks that run the bookstore in the library. That is our sole fundraising effort. We are all volunteers, and we use those funds to support library programs. This is a little outside the normal program that we are asked to support, but we were pleased to do it and happy with the way it turned out, with a little help from our friends.
And all the books that we sell in the bookstore are community donations, so if you have any books that you would like to donate, they're always taking them. And you can become a member of the Friends of the Library as well.
Books or DVDs or CDs, even puzzles.
I heard that it's the only bookstore in the City of Wilsonville.
It's true.
Thank you, thank you so much for your presentation.
I'll just add that I got to firsthand witness how someone has to ride that thing, because we went, all of us, on that Hartz Tour, which I think was, what, 10 miles? It felt like 10 miles, maybe it wasn't. And the driver kept their own. So the curves, I could see where you need training, because if you go too sharp, you could end up upside down.
That was a big part of the training. Anticipate where you're gonna be going, because you'll have to adjust way earlier than a normal bicycle.
I think it's an outstanding idea. Thank you, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. We'll now move to community input announcements portion of the city council meeting agenda. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city business or any matter over which the council has control. It's also the time to address items not on the agenda, it's also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during community input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please, when conveying your remarks, whatever they may be, please speak to the council as a whole and not directly to any one member of council during your comments. Also, please note, you can use the podium or sit at the tables in front of council, whatever makes you feel more comfortable. Please make sure you talk into the microphone at either location. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's webpage, As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record and state your address or state that your address is provided on your speaker card. Please note that this is not the only way to communicate with the council or me. You're welcome to submit information writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with me or any of the other city councilors to discuss any concerns further. With that, I will call Eric Winters.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and councilors. My name's Eric Winters. I am a Wilsonville resident, and my address is on file. I'm also one of the chief petitioners for the right to vote on urban renewal, a citizen initiative petition. I'm here tonight to share some great news. Our petition drive is nearing its successful completion. Our team of circulators powered by your friends and neighbors have gathered signatures, the signatures that are needed to place this measure on the May ballot. What we learned over the past several months is that holding a public vote for major city projects has incredibly broad, deep, and nonpartisan support. Our circulators in every neighborhood in the city report the same thing. Residents of every political persuasion were grateful for the chance to sign. I'd like to take a moment to publicly thank Counselor Cunningham and former Counselor Katie Dunwell. Both signed this petition and have helped spread the word in our community. This support underscores that this is a good governance issue. Wilsonville has a 35-year tradition of letting people vote on urban renewal projects, and we believe that the right, that right should be protected in our city charter. We believe this measure will pass overwhelmingly in May, because standing up for the people's right to vote is an idea that should unite all of us. To that end, I want to publicly extend an invitation to each of you on council. We know the last few months have been busy for you, so I'd like to give you a final chance to sign the petition. I'll be here with my clipboard in the chamber after this meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and of course, offer each of you the opportunity to add your signature, to stand with the many Wilsonville voters who want to remain engaged in major city decisions. We look forward to a healthy public discussion and a successful vote in May. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carl J. Bidrow.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council members. My name is Jay Bidrow. My address is on file, actually at the Stones Road, right over there. My son attended the now-closed YNC Daycare Center over a decade ago at the same time as the mayor's son. Mr. O'Neill graciously invited our family to have lunch with theirs at the McMenamins by Freddy's. We were new to the area and appreciated the offer to connect. We came away thinking we had made a valuable friend in the community. We were soon to be dissuaded of that notion. I recently learned that 20% of the voting power of this council is now invested in an individual who is not elected nor allowed to be vetted by the residents of Wilsonville. Despite being legal, the process was wrong, at best oligarchical, and in the light of recent demonstrations, I'm keen to say, king-like. Political appointments should be made in the spirit of democracy. At minimum, the individual being replaced should be consulted in the decision if they are around to do so. This showed a profound lack of political noose, in my opinion. I also learned that the person appointed was among the mayor's highest campaign donors. One would be reasonable to assume that that appointee is beholden to Mr. O'Neill and his agenda, as he owes his current station, not elected office, solely and directly to Mr. O'Neill. I've also come to be aware that while the largest donation from an individual in the recent mayoral election was $2,500, you received a $10,000 donation from the Oregon Home Builders Association, whose interests extend far beyond the confines of my beloved community. That also leads to the reasonable conclusion that you may be beholden to their interests as well. I also understand you received an endorsement from Melissa Fireside, the Clackamas County Commissioner who fled the country with her nine-year-old son over identity and actual theft allegations. I'm not aware that you have renounced her endorsement, but I would be glad to be informed otherwise. I was also very interested to hear Mrs. Dunwell's recent testimony regarding Mr. O'Neill's behavior. This rang true to me, as I have experienced similar behavior from Mr. O'Neill about 12 years ago. I was quite disappointed when I learned of the 4-1 vote in an undemocratic process that will irreparably change the fabric of the community I love and have chosen to raise my family in. Now I've learned about the introduction of high-density housing in Town Center, an already crowded area that has had no infrastructure improvement to handle the influx of residents and traffic congestion. I live roughly a mile from the proposed site, and this will have a profound impact on many areas of my life. This is not a political question, but a simple logistical one. I admittedly have not been involved in local politics to the extent I should have. However, I'm beginning to understand the farce of community engagement opportunities when we see $10,000 donations from the Oregon Home Builders Association and rank power grabs from the mayor. I and many others are now activated to a much higher level of political awareness and involvement, and will be far more involved in the future. Thank you for your time.
Susan Reap.
My name is Susan Reap, and my information is on file. And I don't intend to make a practice of commenting at every meeting. I don't want to be that person, but tonight I do want to address a couple of important issues. First, I want to speak about the Town Center Plan, which I reviewed carefully while filling out the survey. I support the plan wholeheartedly, however, it seems to lack one feature Wilsonville needs more than anything to make it the vibrant community we want it to be, and I hope you will tell me I just missed it and I'm wrong. There's one side street coming off Main Street that says, "Possibly pedestrian only." In the heart of downtown, it's essential that there be a street that's pedestrian only. And the street that continues on the other side of Main Street should be pedestrian only also. Adjacent to those streets are a gathering space and a motive space, which along with the pedestrian-only streets, configure the area perfectly for restaurants, pubs, entertainment, local shops, coffee houses, local makers, thrifts, craft shops, art galleries, bookstores, the kind of streets and businesses that bring downtowns to life, that attract tourists, that young adults and older people alike want to enjoy. Without this kind of centralized area, I don't think Wilsonville will have achieved the main point of a Town Center. My second issue is about opposition to the Town Center Plan and to urban renewal financing. There seems to be a segment of our citizenry that's working hard to hold back any kind of progress and to... of progress and to intentionally cause dissent. I don't understand why a group of people would hold such animosity that they would attempt to put a measure on the ballot that would affect every citizen in this city and essentially hold back significant progress. Why would they send high school kids out with petitions and have them give untruthful statements to people? They told me that the city wants to take away my vote, so I could please, could I please sign the petition? I said that can't possibly be true. They said it is. Almost every city uses urban renewal financing for major projects. Our neighboring town of Sherwood has completed major projects using urban renewal, and their mayor, Tim Rosner, has taken a strong stand against requiring voter approval for adoption of major or major amendments to urban renewal plans, saying it is often the only viable tool for infrastructure projects. We have to ask ourselves, who is this group of citizens intentionally causing dissent, and why are they so eager to stop forward motion in Wilsonville? They talk about traffic and parking and too many houses, but surely they've read the plan and know it's a 40-year plan. It isn't going to happen next year. People need to be educated. It's almost shameful that such a small amount of our citizenry would want to stop progress for the entire population of the city.[683.32][683.32][applause]
Kyle Bunch.[693.11][693.11][end of transcript]
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. Kyle Bunch. My address is on the speaker card. Two weeks ago, I stood here and asked for accountability. As a citizen who believes in the moral fabric of the city, I asked for leadership that listens, for integrity that matches the values Wilsonville claims to uphold. Since that night, silence has filled this chamber where courage should have spoken. The mayor has yet to respond. No apologies been issued to former councillor Dunwell. Instead, we've watched as the mayor's closest allies tried to rewrite the story, to discredit her, to shift blame to the negativity of Facebook, to turn the focus away from the issue at hand, a pattern of behavior that undermines trust, inclusion, and respect in our city government. But here's the truth: deflection is not leadership. Dismissing someone's lived experience is not strength. Silence in the face of harm is not neutrality, it's complicity. When a public servant says she felt bullied, when multiple citizens share stories of intimidation, of disrespect, and no acknowledgement or apology follows, that's not a communications problem, that's a character problem. You've built your brand on the idea of inclusion, but inclusion is meaningless if it only extends to those who agree with you. Leadership means showing humility when you've caused harm, not circling wagons and blaming the public for noticing. And to the council, leadership is not a spectator sport. Each of you was elected to represent the people of this city, not to protect the image of one person. Silence in this moment sends a message that civility and dignity are optional and that bullying can be swept under the rug if it's politically inconvenient. Even worse, the grandstanding Pauline Miss Domo's comments at the last meeting about how lucky we are to have a mayor was a huge slap in the face to her lived experience. Wilsonville's better than that. We're a city that believes in accountability, empathy, and fairness, and if we can't find the courage to model those values, then the responsibility falls to the rest of this council to demand better on behalf of the citizens you serve. Because leadership without accountability is not leadership at all. It's theater. We deserve sincerity, transparency, and respect. It's not too late to do the right thing. Apologize, acknowledge the harm, lead with humility. That's how you start to rebuild trust. That's how you remind the city what integrity looks like. I want to make one thing absolutely clear. I believe in each of you. I truly do. I believe you stepped into public service for the right reasons, because you care about this city, because you want to make Wilsonville stronger, more connected, more hopeful. But this moment we're in, it's not about you, it's not about me, it's certainly not about any single personality or political ally. It's about the future of this community. It's about the kind of city our children and grandchildren will inherit. It's about what they will learn by watching how we treat each other, how we resolve conflict, how we show up for one another when it matters most. They're watching. The whole community is watching, and what they should see is the Wilsonville way, neighbors who rise above division, leaders who prioritize integrity over comfort, and a council that models the accountability we expect from every corner of our civic life. I'm committed to that fully. The question before each of you tonight is simple: Are you?[880.32][880.32][end of transcript]
Brad Williams.[883.51][883.51][end of transcript]
Hi, I'm Brad Williams. I live in Park at Maryfield, and I am a citizen here. At the last city council meeting, the council was implored to hurry up and move forward with the town center project because your legacies are at stake. Your legacies won't be found in buildings or roads. Your legacy will be the people in your lives you've made an impact on, your children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, or the neighbor boy who doesn't have a dad in his life. I've worked in Wilsonville for the same company since 1998. I moved my family here permanently in 2018. I've seen a lot of changes in this town over the years, most of which I like. Wilsonville used to have a balanced approach to growth, a third businesses, a third single-family homes, and a third apartments. That strategy appears to have been abandoned as the city has increased the percentage of apartments and low-income housing to put us, in my view, out of balance, currently more than any other city in Oregon. In the city's annual report, the town center plan is described as, "Providing diverse housing sizes and types can help accommodate the many different households that might wish to locate in Wilsonville in the future, including people that have been historically excluded." DEI is not an economic model. What is the economic model the city is using to justify the town center plan? I used to think when the city spoke of diversity, equity, inclusion, it was talking about people, but from what I'm seeing, the plan is to alter the economy of Wilsonville to be more economically diverse by lowering the standard of living for those who currently live here in order to raise the standard of living for others who might wish to live here in the future. Instead of importing more low-income earners into our city, we ought to put programs in place to help our current low-income families rise up the economic ladder. Programs like a mentoring program to teach them how to take their current skill sets and build a resume and how to interview to get a higher-paying job, how to create a household budget to live below your means, how to maximize SNAP benefits to stock a pantry so that there's another government shutdown, they won't go hungry. As the saying goes, "Give a man a fish and you feed him for a day. Teach a man to fish and you feed him for a lifetime." Let's teach our citizens who need our help how to fish. Thank you.[1068.24][1068.24][applause]
Jeff Zundel.[1072.01][1072.01][end of transcript] It's kind of loud. All right. My name's Jeff Zundel. I'm, my address is on file. I didn't prepare remarks, but I was too, I wasn't able to be here for the work session, but I loved the discussion that I saw and heard among the mayor and city council about our, the parks and how we maintain our parks and the economic kind of burden that it puts on our city when we build more parks, contrasted with the benefit that we get when we have parks, that the, how it attracts people to our city and the, the way that it increases the value of our city. I loved the, the critical take that the council was taking around, how do we avoid increasing the cost of our residents? And especially the, the point where one of our council members talked about how new developments come in, they build more parks, and then they leave that burden on the city for all of the people of the city to share. But I'd like to point out that two weeks ago, we were also talking about another thing that is a burden on the city, which is our stormwater and sewer rates going up, which also is closely tied to how we build our city and how we, which kinds of developments we approve. And when we, when we build long-distance water pipelines and sewer pipelines, those are very expensive to maintain, and it's easy for us to say, hey, this SDC from this developer is going to build this, but 40, 50, 60 years in the future, who's going to pay for the replacement? As opposed to higher-density developments, which may not be popular by some of our residents, they tend to pay for the infrastructure that, that needs to be replaced over time because there's greater density, because there's more revenue coming in from those kinds of developments. So as we talk about the increased financial burden on our city for things like parks, and as we're critical about how we build more parks and how that, the, the maintenance cost is spread across all of our residents, I'd encourage the council to remain critical about other aspects of development as well, like our sewer and streets, like our, our stormwater, like our water, and everything else that tends to be built once by a developer and the shared cost goes to the rest of the city long-term. So thank you very much. I really appreciate all your service and, and great critical conversation. Thank you.[1218.24][1218.24][applause]
Good evening. My name is Andrew Engel. My address is on the speaker card, and I'm here to talk to you briefly today about growth. I really wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I was inspired by another audience member's comments about renters. As a renter in the city of Wilsonville, I encourage renters to move to the city of Wilsonville because it is a great opportunity to live close to the metro area, where there are lots of good jobs, there are amazing schools, there are amazing libraries, there are amazing parks, and there are still apartments here that can afford to be rented near all those amenities. As someone who's rented in the city of Wilsonville for eight years, I resent the negative dispersion generally cast on renters by a previous comment, and I would like to stand up for renters and say that my neighbors are good people, my neighbors are great people, they belong in this town, and what is not going to work for their future is pursuing a vision of Wilsonville revolving around expanding single-family housing because that ship has sailed, and trying to increase affordability costs by focusing exclusively or even primarily on single-family housing is not going to work. That's why I support some form of town center plan. I'm still working on educating myself on the details. However, based on my ability to educate myself on the details and read the measure proposed, I oppose the measure which purports to give citizens the right to vote, but in fact ties up the process of urban renewal in needing to relitigate in the public voting sphere any changes to urban renewal plans. Changes to the cost, schedule, boundaries, needing to be put to a vote every time urban renewal plans are adjusted threatens to tie up the necessary investments in infrastructure that it would take to make a town center plan succeed. Would you let me finish?[1363.82][1363.82][applause] Would you let me finish?[1367.35][1367.35][end of transcript] I also find that some members of this audience have a difficulty allowing their opposition to speak.
Stop. No interruption in the audience. Finish your statement.
Thank you. I was, I enjoyed my personal exchange with one of Mr. Winters' paid signature collectors at the library. Unfortunately, I had to go get the measure text at home because he did not have that with him. So with that in mind, I would encourage citizens and councillors to be very wary of any invitations to sign the petition on the spot. Thank you.[1410.01][1410.01][applause]
No one's on Zoom. Okay. Now let's turn to councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements. Council President Barry.
Thank you. So the last couple of weeks, I've been, I think I mentioned at the last city council meeting that I've been recovering from knee, knee replacement, and so my activities have been a little bit slower, but I haven't been able to attend the focus groups on the town center by Zoom. And then on Friday, the November 14th, with councillor Cunningham, we met with the people that were holding the focus groups to learn the summary and the takeaways. And what, what I learned is that the people who participated in the three different focus groups on the town center all want to see a vibrant, walkable town center where people, citizens and business people within the city of Wilsonville can socialize, they can shop, they can recreate, they can see their neighbors and visit. The, the people that participated in the town center focus groups would like to see money that is spent, or that's consumer spending, stay inside Wilsonville instead of going to surrounding areas. They don't want to see an increase in their own property taxes. Another concern was traffic, and that the timeline of what the development for the town center was for these people who participated was unclear. They, they were unsure if the town center was going to develop like in the next five years or if it was a 40-year plan. My takeaway was that people are really interested in having a vibrant community in the city where town center is, but maybe of this group, I would estimate that maybe 10% of the participants really were familiar with the, the 2019 town center plan that was approved, and that there was even less understanding of what urban renewal funding is and how it works. And so I think that the city needs to, you know, if we're moving forward with a town center plan, any kind of development, we really need to work on educating everybody of what the plan is, what our goals are, how we want to achieve it, and how we would pay for it. So that was my takeaways from that. And then I also attended the tourism meeting on, the committee meeting on Wednesday, November 5th, and we have a tourism promotion committee for the city of Wilsonville because we do have a number of hotels. I think there's maybe nine or 10 hotels within the city, and we have a whole lot of different restaurants, and so we want to, you know, we want to support our businesses. And so the tourism committee is one of the ways that we're learning and working to supporting our local businesses. One of the things that we did at the last meeting is we elected our new vice president, the vice chair, Gus Castaneda, who's the GM for the Wilsonville Hilton, and we talked about the marketing and the program updates. And I encourage everybody to go to the explorewilsonville.com website. It has so much information on activities and events and things to do in Wilsonville, and, you know, if you have people that, family members, maybe for Thanksgiving, that are coming to town and you're looking for ideas of what to do, go to the explorewilsonville.com website. It's really, really good. I think that's my, my notes for tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Cunningham.
So on November 5th, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the mayor and councillor Shevlin and I attended the Clackamas State of the County address. It was informative. It was also a very interesting format where all five members of the commission were onstage together and were able to answer questions collaboratively, and I thought that was a really good approach. It showed a lot of unity to those in attendance and in the community. And then as council president Barry just mentioned, on Friday, November 14th, we both attended the focus group debrief via Zoom. It was, you know, we were all able to view the focus groups as they were occurring, and those were very informative to, to see all of the discussion that occurred. As council president Barry mentioned, you know, everybody wants to see something good happen with, with town center. Everyone's got a little bit of a different vision. Probably by the end of whatever we figure out, not everyone's going to be 100% happy, and, and that's how it probably should be. But there were, you know, concerns regarding traffic and density, parking, a lot of those issues that came up and, and were, were constants across the three groups. I would, I'm hoping that there's an opportunity for that presentation to come before the public so that the public can see what your elected leaders were able to see and get information on, and hopeful that we'll also be able to have the citizens see kind of just the results of the, those focus groups, so, you know, that you're all informed on, on kind of what was talked about and, you know, the things that we know, I, I would hope that all of you would be able to be made aware of and informed of as well. Finally, a little bit of sad news. A member of our community, a friend to many in our community, a gentleman named Devin Dobek, you might have heard the news that he was a hunter who went missing. who went missing, uh, back in late October. Uh, unfortunately, on Sunday, they found his remains. Uh, and, uh, I talked to a few of our citizens here in town who knew him and were friends with him, and, uh, with that, I'd, I'd just like to have a moment of silence in, uh, memory of Mr. Dobek. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Uh, councillor Shevlin.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, all of our staff here at the city deserve thank yous for all of the good work that they do, but I'd like to take, uh, a moment this time to thank our public works, uh, department and staff because this time of year, our streets are always at risk for being unsafe from limbs falling and various debris and all the leaves that collect in our streets, and I just wanted publicly to thank them for all of the hard work that they do to make sure that all the streets in our community are kept safe as we go into, uh, more rain and, and our winter months. Uh, on November eighth, I had the opportunity to attend a veterans breakfast in Charbonneau that was sponsored by the Wilsonville Rotary. That's always a highlight of our community, and we really appreciate all the support that the Wilsonville Rotary offers for, um, this special veterans breakfast. There was a, a presentation by Charbonneau resident, um, and veteran, Mr. John Badiyo, that was, um, very well done. Uh, hopefully, most of you saw also the article in the Wilsonville spokesman about Mr. Badiyo. Um, but it was very heartfelt about him, uh, and his life and, uh, being a veteran, and, um, he's very proud of that, and he represented the, um, veterans well in his words. Also, as was stated by the mayor, on November eleventh, I had the opportunity and I was honored and humbled to take part in the wreath presentation for the, um, veterans, um, ceremony at Town Center Park. Uh, along with that, a bit of a personal note, uh, my husband came along. He's a veteran, but also my, uh, two adult children called the night before and said, "Oh, my goodness, we didn't realize that Tuesday was a holiday. Can you watch the kids?" So, I, you know what? We all made it work because we brought the kids to the veterans ceremony. And that's very important because so many of our young children don't understand the importance of, uh, the role that, um, uh, veterans and, and our military currently play in supporting our, um, our wellbeing. So, it was a win-win for all, and they loved the flyover by the, the air, I think it was the Air National Guard, but it was, um, quite a bit, quite fun. Um, previously though, in the month, um, as the mayor stated, I intended, along with councillor Cunningham and the mayor, the, uh, Clackamas County State of the County Report on November the fifth. What particularly interested me, uh, there were many good things that were, uh, that are going on with the county, but Commissioner Ben West spoke, um, at length about, uh, the, uh, efforts toward, uh, developing a recovery campus for people that, um, are suffering from substance, uh, abuse, alcohol abuse. And being a, a nurse, uh, myself as, um, Mr. West, Commissioner West is, um, I'm really going to follow that closely. Funding hasn't been, um, completely worked out for the recovery campus, but this would be a place where some people would be able to live on campuses. They recover and perhaps in the acute phase of their recovery, and then lots of what those of us in healthcare call outpatient, but where people can still come as they work through their recovery and, um, receive the support they need for life skills and jobs and everything that one needs to be able to get back on their feet. So, the county's working hard at establishing that, and Commissioner West is leading the way, and, and I support his efforts and, um, and all of the county's efforts toward that. Um, also on November sixth, as was stated by the mayor, I attended the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee in Canby, and it was really, really, um, uh, enlightening to see the efforts that they've put forth toward their housing and toward their economic development, and I think we learned some good things that we could apply here in our community as well. Uh, on November twelfth, I took part in, um, my community in Charbonneau in an emergency management and incident command drill. That's something we do in Charbonneau, um, twice a year where we hold a, um, what, what's known in the industry as a tabletop exercise. What, so our exercise was that there was a fire coming from, uh, Estacada and toward Canby and then making its way up toward Wilsonville, and then we all play roles as to how we're going to deal with, um, our situation in our community. And I understand that there may be opportunities to share this process with the city of Wilsonville on, um, how we plan for emergency management. And lastly, um, in the community of Charbonneau, we are looking at the French Prairie Pathway Project. Just a reminder to everyone, Charbonneau was built in the nineteen seventies when there was no code for sidewalks, so we have a partial pathway. It's uprooted a lot by trees and our, uh, residents have fallen, so the city, uh, is working with the community and with the board of directors from Charbonneau to find out what would they like to see. So, right now, we're just in the, uh, citizen input process, and we hope to, um, have some summary and, uh, information about that after the first of the year, and I know some of that, that information will come to the council as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Schol.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, over the past couple of weeks, my primary focus has been participating in a series of orientations, uh, sessions here with city staff. Uh, I've had probably ten to twelve meetings in the last two weeks that's covered everything from the city manager to, uh, code compliance, and it's been very comprehensive. Each session has offered a helpful overview of key operations, priorities, and challenges across the organization. Uh, during that time, I also re- uh, met with Richard Myers from GMP, uh, HR, where he provided me with, uh, a detailed overview of the city manager hiring process, and during that conversation, I was, I also had the opportunity to offer feedback and suggestions, which I appreciated. Uh, later this week, I will continue my onboarding, uh, with visits to the library, public works, and the police department. Uh, this is the, you know, to basically ensure that I fully understand the work underway in each department, I've already begun to schedule, uh, some of the fo- some follow-up meetings to revisit, revisit areas, uh, we could not cover in depth during, uh, the initial briefings. My goal is to approach this new role with the, uh, as much clarity and context as possible. I want to express my sincere appreciation to the city staff for taking the time to walk me through the inner workings of the city. The team is remarkably professional, dedicated, deeply, and deeply committed to serving the community. Uh, these conversations have been both informative, encouraging, and they'll help me, uh, make, uh, my integration into the council as smooth and effective as possible. Uh, in my, and during my initial, uh, talks a couple of weeks ago, one thing I didn't get to do, uh, and I would like to do that now, is I'd like to take a moment to thank our boards, commissions, and committee volunteers. There's about twelve advisory groups out there with roughly, roughly eighty residents that generously contribute their time, expertise, and passion to help keep our city current, resilient, and moving forward. Their services play an essential role in how we govern and how we maintain, uh, Wilsonville's exceptional quality of life, and I'd like to thank them for all they do. And then finally, uh, our next meeting is in December, so I hope that, uh, everybody enjoys the upcoming holidays and has a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Resolution number three-two-two-four, resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute modification number two to the Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, Tri-Met Subrecipient Agreement for fiscal years twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven and minutes of the November three, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting.
Council president Barry can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been approved. The following, uh, the motion approved the consent agenda. Is there, and second, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Turning now to new business, we as a council will consider resolution number three-two-two-six, resolution adopting hiring standards, criteria, excuse me, criteria and policy directives for the employment of a public officer. I'll ask Ms. Andrea Via Grande, wait a minute, Via Grande to present the staff report. Is she here? No. Oh, here she is. She heard me miss pronounce her name, so she's running. You're on. Not a problem. Perfect timing.
The timing on the, on the YouTube channel is a little behind. Thank you, mayor, uh, mayor and city council for your time tonight. I appreciate it. I'm Andrea Via Grande, the HR manager for the city. And tonight you have before you your staff report and a resolution to approve the profile for the city manager recruitment. Excuse me. And we're hoping to, um, move the process forward so that we can start the recruitment and start receiving applications. And a part of your, what you have before you tonight is approving the profile so that we can eventually hold interviews in executive session. And with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions with council? Okay. I think everything that I mentioned in the November twelfth, twenty-twenty-five special meeting, I'll just incorporate here my comments and concerns, which I think have been addressed, so.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, council president Barry can have a motion to approve resolution number three-two-two-six, resolution adopting hiring standards, criteria, and moot policy directives for the employment of a public officer.
I move to adopt resolution number three-two-two-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by council president Barry and seconded by councillor Shevlin. The motion to approve the following order, wait a minute, the motion to approve resolution number three-two-two-six has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. We're now turning to, thank you, we're now turning to our public hearing. Tonight, we'll have a public hearing to consider on first reading ordinance number nine-hundred and ordinance for the city of Wilsonville implementing an administrative warrants process by amending chapter one of the Wilsonville Code to add sections one-point-one-zero-zero through one-point-one-eight-zero. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I'll ask everyone to s- uh, who signed up in advance to testify. First, in the order in which they signed up, then I'll ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify, and then I'll ask anyone who is on Zoom, on the Zoom meeting who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. After each person testifies, councillors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision. The public hearing will be closed, council deliberates, and I will announce the result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with that someone before you have s- before you has said, excuse me, try that again. If you agree with what someone before you has said, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. The public hearing is now open eight forty, uh, eight oh-four PM, excuse me. Amanda Guile Hinman, city attorney, please provide the staff's presentation.
Thank you, mayor and council. Um, I'm Amanda Guile Hinman, city attorney, and tonight we are having the public hearing on, um, the administrative warrants code update, which would add, um, Wilsonville Code provisions one-point-one-zero-zero through one-point-one-eight-zero to the Wilsonville Code. Um, as a reminder for city council in the community, um, the administrative warrants code update is part of one of the city council's goals. Um, goal number two is looking at public safety updates, and strategy two-point-five under that goal is specifically examining whether to add a local administrative warrants process to the city code. So, the purpose of the administrative warrants process is first that it's part of this larger code enforcement update under this public safety, uh, council goal. It's essentially looking at, do we have all the tools in our toolbox to address code enforcement issues in the city, and not the lack of an administrative warrants process was one that was identified as a tool that the city is currently missing. So, right now, city staff don't have a mechanism to enter onto private property when there is a code enforcement violation occurring or, um, you know, a belief that that violation is occurring to investigate that outside of owner consent or going to circuit court to get an order to do so. Um, in contrast, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and Clackamas County have code provisions that, um, provide an administrative warrant process, so law enforcement for things like, um, traffic, for traffic, uh, violations where they are pulling somebody over, maybe they need to go inside a vehicle. Um, particularly, we see this with our RV enforcement. They have that tool available to them, and our city staff do not. So, one of the, uh, one of the comparators we actually examined was Clackamas County and Washington County, um, with regard to their code enforcement process and their administrative warrants. So, the code provisions that, um, are being proposed do several things. I'm going to just name, go over a few of the highlights. Um, first is that it's granting our municipal court judge the authority to issue administrative warrants, um, so that way we have an individual who's, um, employed by the city, who has, is, um, a judicial officer, who can review, um, at, uh, in an affidavit, a probable cause affidavit, and also administer an oath to swear somebody in to, um, further investigate whether an administrative warrant is author, is appropriate. And then they also go over the requirements for issuing an administrative warrant and the requirements for execution. So, to get into a little bit more detail about issuance procedures, um, so prior to seeking that, uh, a warrant, there has to be some effort, some reasonable effort by city staff to attempt to get entry through consent of a property owner. Um, and that is generally what we do on a daily basis whenever we're dealing with a code enforcement issue, is we try as best we can to get compliance, get the consent of property owners, um, to come into compliance with our city code. Um, if we can't get entry, the next step is that we have to, the city staff person has to have probable cause of a city code violation occurring, and how that is documented is through a sworn affidavit that will go to our municipal court judge. There's several provisions in, in our proposed code that are included in what needs to be in that probable cause affidavit, but in particular, some of the things have to include the specific code provision, ordinance, or regulation that is believed to being, being violated, and the purpose of entry onto the property and the basis for that probable cause. Probable cause is also defined in that, in the code where it says, in the proposed code where it talks about it's only deeming to exist if there's a legislative or administrative standards for inspection, or there's an investigation, the investigation is necessary to determine if a violation is occurring. The way the code is also written out is that the municipal court judge will examine the applicant, so the city staff person who's coming before the, the court asking for this administrative warrant. They will examine that applicant under oath, and if that, if the judge is satisfied that probable cause exists, the warrant will be issued. It has to specify the name and title of the authorized person, so the city staff person who's allowed to go on the property, what property may be entered, and, and, and the purpose of entering the property, and any limitations that may exist. Uh, the execution of the warrant must occur within ten business days. Um, there has to be an effort when going on the property of presenting, uh, the individual's credentials, authority, and purpose of the warrant to an occupant at the property. The execution, um, provisions also discuss what you do, what city staff do. If there's unoccupied property, there has to be an effort, um, made to find the, uh, either an occupant or an owner of the property. If the warrant allows for, if the administrative warrant allows for any items to be seized, there has to be a list generated of all those items, and that list has to be turned back in with the warrant, um, back into the court. I see there's a typo on forcible entry, but it also covers, uh, any issues where there may need to be forcible entry. It's essentially like administrative warrants are already considered a, a, a last resort tool, but definitely forcible entry would be the very last option available that we would undertake, and really that's imminent life safety types of issues. Um, with that, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I did want to highlight one other thing that did come up in the work session that, uh, has been changed as part of the code, the proposed code provisions that's before council. There was, um, a, a discrepancy in the staff report versus the code. The code only talked about cause. It did not talk about reasonable suspicion, but the staff report incorrectly said that it talked about reasonable suspicion. They are different standards, but in addition to that, although it said cause, we did add the word probable. But in addition to that, although it said cause, we did add the word probable anytime cause appeared in that, in our proposed code. So to make clear to anybody that what the standard is being applied is a probable cause standard for review. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council has at this time.
Any questions? Seeing none? Do we have any people to sign up? Anybody in the audience wish to testify on this matter? Okay. Seeing none? Anything further added staff?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
All right. With that, hearing no further questions, everything, everyone having an opportunity to testify that and chosen not to, I hereby declare the public hearing closed at 8:11 PM. It is now time for council to consider the ordinance number 900 and ordinance of the city of Wilsonville implementing an administrative warrants process by amending chapter one of the Wilsonville Code to add sections 1.100 through 1.180 on first reading. I'll never understand this. We can deliberate at this time, but usually we wait until the motion's been presented. Anybody want to talk about this? Okay. Seeing none? Do I have a motion on ordinance 900?
I move to adopt ordinance number 900 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion has been made by city council president Barry and seconded by councillor Skoll to approve ordinance number 900 and ordinance of the city of Wilsonville implementing an administrative warrants process by amending chapter one of the Wilsonville Code to add sections 1.100 through 1.180 on first reading. Any discussion? Councillor Shevlin?
Thank you, mayor. I just simply, I, I approve this code, this change for, I believe it adds a clear and consistent process to investigate potential Wilsonville code violations. I believe that our city attorney has done her due diligence in looking at standards around our region and around the country and has made a proposal that is, is sound and keeps staff safe, but also respects the property owner by going through the proper channels. Thank you.
I concur with that. I also think they were catching us up because other, other municipalities already have this process. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none? I'll call for the vote on ordinance number 900. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any city manager business?
Couple of items, mayor. The, the Town Center Urban Renewal Questionnaire is live and it's been out there for about a week. And as of today, we have 223 unique responses, which is pretty remarkable. And to councillor Cunningham's question about presenting publicly, we will be doing that on the first of the second meeting of December. We'll advertise that to make sure the people that want to hear about those results, they will get the same presentation that you all received from DHM. And then we will have the other consultant group presenting their summary responses to the, the questionnaire that is on, is on the street right now. And that questionnaire is based on the prompts that the folks that went through the focus groups received as well. So there's a lot of similarities between those two. And I just want to note that both of those are, we're not calling the questionnaire a survey because that denotes that it's scientifically valid. So I just want to be clear that both of these are qualitative touchpoints for council, they're not quantitative. So there, there's not going to be any cross tabs or standard deviations involved with either one of those. It's just a, it's a touch point with the community. And then secondly, city charter requires a manager pro temp. Whenever the city manager position becomes vacant, and just based on where we're at with the recruitment now, it does not appear that, that those are going to overlap very well. So based on the current recruitment schedule, the city will not hire a new city manager before my retirement at the end of '25. Internal budget presentations begin in December with department meetings occurring in January and February timeframe. Given the timing of the recruitment and its impact on the budget development process, I am offering to serve as manager pro temp through March 31st, 2026, or until a new city manager is hired, whichever is first, to provide continuity of operations and stability during the transition period. If council concurs, I will ask human resources to draft a short, short-term employment contract for your review and approval at the December 15th meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Would you like that concurrence now?
Well, yeah, before we put it on the agenda, it'd be nice to know if, if you want to move in that direction. I'm not sure what the other options would be, but I'm offering it.
I personally don't have a problem with that.
No, I just thank you for making yourself available, especially when the horizon was different when you looked out a few months ago, but thank you.
I have no plans until June of '26.
I, I concur. I support, I support that.
I, I think that's a very nice gesture on your part. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Skoll?
I concur. Thank you very much.
Councillor Cunningham? Okay. Think you got your hands?
Right.
Any further manager business?
Nothing.
Okay. Attorney business?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Okay, we are adjourned at 8:16 PM.